All right, let's call this meeting to order. First, I just wanted to echo what I said downstairs, which is that this is really historic time for our town. Each of you on the board brings unique skills, backgrounds, and experiences, and I look forward to working with each of you. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. You realize that we don't have a flag. We all participated in the Pledge of Allegiance downstairs, so if there's no objection, we'll skip that item. I'd like to move next to public audience. Board of Selectmen rules and procedures allow anyone to speak for five minutes on any topic that they're choosing, so if there's anyone who'd like to speak tonight.
Thank you. Joan Coe, 26, Wickham Drive. We are now witnessing the beginning of the transition towards a professional town manager. However, the transition has become a shift without a rudder, although there has been a year to plan for the transition. Tonight, the agenda reflects five: appoint Melissa Appleby as deputy town manager with an adjustment in salary. Melissa Appleby started her employment in February 2017 with a salary of $95,000 as deputy director of administrative services, and will become deputy town manager at 1069. Six and seven on the agenda: appoint Shawn Kimball as interim town manager with additional compensation. Shawn Kimball was hired as a risk manager with a salary of $57,500, with a background in municipal government through Mary Glassman Headhunter in 2011. Shawn Kimball will move from his position as finance director with a salary of $97,000 after several positions within the town, with adjusted compensation, to become the interim town manager with a salary of $131,000. Is this transition so that Shawn Kimball can enhance his resume in applying for a town manager job in the future? Eight and nine on the agenda: approve the severance agreement and approve the employment agreement, and Tom Cook as interim director of finance treasurer. Tom Cook, administrative assistant to the first elected society, was hired in 2010 through a Headhunter in the Mary Glassman administration. Tom Cook was hired due to his expertise in labor law and no municipal experience, with a salary of under $25,000, to negotiate union salaries as a pseudo-town manager. Over the years, Tom Cook's salary escalated to under $24,000. How can Tom Cook ask for a severance package when he is already retired and will be returning as a consultant with a per diem salary of $62,500 an hour for two days a week with a maximum of 16 hours as finance director? Why is the town paying for its health benefits when there are no part-time employees that support these benefits? Presently, there is a reshuffling of duties and more increases in salaries. All these employees have been given a 2% increase in salary and will now get another bump in salary during the transition. The transition has become a costly endeavor for the taxpayers with adjustments in salaries that have been increased immeasurably over the years with the administration. G on the agenda: reappointment town council, labor employment council, retirement claim council should be reserved for town manager Maria Capioli to appoint. These actions should be tabled. It is my opinion that Batti Crescendo has outlived his ability to serve the town, becoming the ringmaker for uptight Kelly and Spellicy. Mayors in surrounding towns do not get a stipend, neither should the first electman for Simsbury. The town manager will receive a salary of $152,500 with an increase of $2,500 in a year, and $3,000 for travel and $5,000 for moving expenses. Why is there delaying the start of the town manager until the end of January with a plan in place for a year? Why do we need a full-time finance director when Tom Cook has given responsibility to the job on a part-time basis with no accounting experience? Is this shuffle of duties placing the town at risk? Recently, we discovered that the town had a shortfall of $15,000 in capital expenditure budget. Why doesn't the town have some stopgap software before capital projects are over-expended? Many of the taxpayers in Simsbury are working in organizations where they have increased responsibilities without any increase in pay. Why are the taxpayers asked to subsidize them conflated salaries? Although the transition has had a rocky start with the town running on autopilot for two months, I'm looking forward to professional town manager to manage the town with dedication and clarity of duties. I recently filed a complaint with the Freedom of Information Commission, asking to have the four performing arts to play at a public agency. The hearing officer denied my request. However, there'll be a hearing with the full commission in January 10, where I'll be able to give them my position and have them reverse their decision. I am concerned that the PAC under the direction of Dave Ryan and Tom Vincent, given the status of private organization on town property, will become an unaccountable organization with unfettered authority. The concerts will increase without any challenges, and I am concerned there'll be an increase of hot slinking at the concert, and tailgating will increase on town estate and private property without any enforcement. Use of the trailer park will increase during concerts without any monitoring of activity. Under the amended S-PAC contract, quote, "The town further reserves the right to terminate this agreement for its convenience at its sole discretion," end quote. The S-PAC has become a public nuisance, and the contract should be terminated. All of my comments will be put on Simsbury PAC, Twitter at Joan Coe, News Feed on Facebook, and Simsbury Forum topics. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in public audience?
Yeah. Ed Monte, for George Street. As executive director of Simsbury Housing Authority and chairman of the DGT Disability Commission, first of all, I want to congratulate everybody, those who were elected and those who were re-elected. I want to, we're certainly looking forward to working with you all as we address issues for seniors, persons with disabilities, and of course, with housing in the town. I do want to take this opportunity to thank Tom Cook, because Tom was instrumental in the Housing Authority receiving two small cities grants, which are truly improving the life of the Housing Authority. And thank you. I also want to thank Shawn, because he continues to assist us with those grants. So, thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it. And thank all of you, and again, I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Then we'll move on to the selectmen actions. Item A is the appointment of the deputy first electman. One of the changes in our charter is the appointment of the deputy first electman. It used to require a vote by the board, and is now up to the discretion of the first electman. I've asked Chris Kelly to continue in his role as deputy. His longstanding service in our town, very well-respected member of this board and the community, and I've been particularly impressed with your thoughtfulness, attention to detail, your work ethic, and the inclusive manner in which you work. So, thank you, Chris, for continuing to serve in this capacity. Moving on to B, the approval of the resolution adopting the Board of Selectmen rules and procedures. So, this next item, the document in your packet was adopted by the board back in December 2015 for the 2016-2017 term, and tonight we'll be adopting rules and procedures for the upcoming term. Is there any discussion?
I have one recommended change, if you will entertain that. Item A, 162-3, placement of items on agenda by a board member. In the case that we can place an item on the agenda by contact to the first electman or the director of administrative services, and I recommend that we change that to the town manager.
Good catch. Thanks, Cheryl. Is there any objection to that? Anything else? Any other items? Okay. So, is there a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen rules and procedure for the 2018-2019 term?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item C is the approval of the Board of Selectmen meetings for 2018. So, the Board of Selectmen by resolution determines the time and place of these meetings, and you'll see the dates in your packet. You may have noticed that there are five Wednesdays this year, and that's because of when other holidays fall. And one in particular that caught my eye was February 14. And as much as I want to spend Valentine's Day with all of you, I thought it would be a nice day to go to family.
I am not feeling the love there.
You just have excuse for it.
So, I would propose that perhaps we meet on Thursday at the 15th. Would there be any objection to that?
It's only two days, I believe.
Is that the second Thursday of the month?
Fifteenth. No, the version would be the first.
The third.
I think it's the third. I mean, it is the third.
Fifteenth.
That'd be the third. That'd be the third, too.
No, it's just that I have standing commitments on the second Thursday of the month, so...
So, that, yeah, so the 15th is the third Thursday.
Okay.
So, that would work? Okay, any objection to the 15th? Any other discussion on the meeting times?
I do have one request. December, looking forward for the full year, the second week of December is a bit problematic for me, but I'm going from a business standpoint, so I'm wondering if the proposition be either moving back to 17th or forward the third?
Anybody have, yeah, any conversation about that? Any preference on whether it's forward or back?
Yeah. We just enjoy the location, and the first and third Mondays aren't planning, so you may have been made here if you did.
Okay.
And we've done that before. So, it'll be accommodated.
Okay.
Yeah, so we want to do the 17th just to give everybody more time, just in case?
Yeah.
Especially on the one meeting. I think you're being...
Rather do it later than earlier, because then we'll have a special.
Okay.
So, the 17th?
Yes, we'll do the December 17th and then February 15th. Any other discussion?
So, we just need to amend the resolution to include the main meeting room or elsewhere, otherwise it's gonna have to be a special meeting.
We'll leave that to the discretion of Joe and Mark, who might actually do that this way. But it'll definitely be noticed as soon as we meet.
Okay, just want to make sure it doesn't have to be a special.
So, do we have a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting schedule with those two changes?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion passes unanimously. D is the first electman's appointment of board and commission liaison assignments, so part of the town charter, it's up to the discretion of the first electman to appoint liaisons to our various boards and commissions. One thing that was really important to me is that we look at the interests and the experience and the expertise of board members as part of that process, so I did my very best to align them that way. I just wanted to hear if anyone, did anyone receive a liaison assignment that you absolutely can't do because of a conflict or something like that? No? Okay, good. So, then moving on to E, and then these are the actions in connection with the transition to a town manager. And first, I'd like to thank Chris Kelly and Shawn Aspin and Cheryl Cook as members of Personnel Subcommittee, who did a lot of work putting these documents together. But I'd like to ask, Chris, to do these things.
Thank you, Eric. And of course, we couldn't have succeeded without the support of Tom and Melissa, who did a considerable amount of work. So, we have nine action items here, which really are all related to the restructure to the town manager form of government. They really fall into three categories. One is directly related to the structure in relation to the town manager. The second category are a number of items that are related to creating an interim form of government between now and when Maria will start on the 28th or 29th of the month. And then the last is we have an action item that relates to the elimination of the director of administrative services position. So, I'm gonna handle the introduction of the first three, Cheryl will do the second three, Shawn will do the third. We do have at the very end of the document a complete cost analysis of all elements of this. All of these actions were known to have, that they would occur a year ago, when we knew we were moving into a town manager form of government, or, in the case of the interim structure, these were contingencies that we had worked out well, you know, six months ago, eight months ago, based on the knowledge that the town manager might not start directly. So, those nine action items are to approve the job description for the town manager position, to approve the employment contract for the town manager, to ratify the conditional offer letter that we made to Maria Capiola, to approve the job description for the deputy town manager, a new position, to appoint Melissa Appleby as director as deputy town manager, including adjusted compensation for that role, to approve the appointment of Shawn Kimball as interim town manager, to approve the compensation recommendation for him in that role as interim town manager, to approve the severance agreement for the elimination of the director of administrative services position, and then finally, to approve the employment agreement for the appointment of Tom Cook as interim director of finance and treasurer. Starting with the job description, members of this board have reviewed a job description for the town manager a number of months ago. The job description that you had in your package has only changed to include a number of items that we heard as part of the focus groups, and we had some, one specific recommendation from the Economic Development Commission that we integrated into that job description. Otherwise, it's very similar to what you had seen before. The salary range that is in the job description is $140,000 to $160,000. I'll stop here and ask if there's any questions anyone has. And if not, I would make a motion to approve the town manager job description.
I'd second that. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Our second is to ratify the conditional offer that we had made to Maria. The conditional offer is an offer subject to final background check, medical review, and agreement on employment contract at the time that we offered it. It also had the value of facilitating the ability to make an offer to Maria prior to our December 4 meeting. The conditional offer basically is, covers the effective time period from 11/16/17 to 12/4/17. I'm not gonna read the elements that are in the conditional offer, because I am going to identify what's in the contract, and they're identical. So, that said, I'll just ask if there's any questions? And if not, I would make a motion to ratify the conditional offer to Maria Capiola.
I'll second that.
Any further conversation? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Third item is to approve the employment contract for the town manager. This is also something that all of you have reviewed, because we've worked on collectively as part of the Executive Search Committee. It's been vetted several times by the Executive Improvement Committee, as well as Personnel Subcommittee, as well as our town attorney. This is the final recommended version. Couple of things I would just highlight on it. It's a three-year contract. It's effective January 29, 2018. The town manager will participate in the unaffiliated employee benefits, including a defined pension program. A laptop and cellphone will be provided to the individual. There are termination provisions, which include severance guidelines that are included within the contract. The compensation in the contract is a starting salary of $152,500, to be increased at the end of the first year to at least $155,000, subject to the fulfilling of a set of performance requirements. And those performance requirements will include the development of an economic development strategic plan. There's a $5,000 stipend to assist with relocation to Simsbury. There's a $350 a month vehicle allowance, and there's also a commitment to allow her to participate in professional development. Fairly straightforward, standard contract. I'll stop there if there's any questions or comments.
Just that I think we worked extensively on this through the executive committee process and with our consultant, and from what we learned, and I think I've learned, this is obviously standard contractual language within the town manager space. I think it's fair on both sides of, both sides of the agreement, and I think it positions as well for Maria to be successful, and also to make sure that there's continuity, because it is a three-year term versus our two-year term. And that was something that we talked about, and I think most of us, not all of us, felt strongly about, to make sure that there's as much independence as possible. So, I appreciate everybody's work on this.
So, that, I'll make a motion to approve the employment contract for Maria Capiola's appointment as Simsbury Town Manager with enthusiasm.
And I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
With enthusiasm.
At least our enthusiasm.
We're excited. She's crying already.
Guest of the board is aware, we did get a background check back today, and to nobody's surprise, these passed a flood.
Good, glad to hear that.
That's great.
Do we need to sign that every time before we all roll out?
I think that's a great decision.
Given the historical issue of being a...
I think that's... If you don't mind copying the bullets and... We don't get to sign it.
Okay, moving on. I am going to make a motion to approve the job description for the deputy town manager. This is a new position. Many people will recognize Melissa as the deputy director of administrative services in a role in which she has served admirably and with distinction, and we are very grateful for her service. Now, as we transition to the town manager form of government, we need to create a new position for deputy town manager, and in doing so, we could find no better person to fill that position than Melissa. She has worked tirelessly on this process to help us with the transition and to guide us through all of the technical ins and outs of what we need to do to make this go as smooth as possible, and we thank you for that. The job description for the deputy town manager will include, in addition to most of those responsibilities outlined in the former job description for the deputy director of administrative services, now will add to that assisting with policy development, the economic development initiative support. She will act as the primary liaison to the town attorney. She will represent the town manager as needed and as requested, and this includes acting as, I'm sorry, as being the acting town manager in the absence of the town manager for any reason. So, that is her additional responsibilities. I think you all have a chance to review most of the changes in here, other than those I just highlighted, you would find in the former description of the deputy director of administrative services. Do you have any questions?
Just one comment, and I think we, I think we did a good job with this, but we're very willing to look at it again, once everybody's on the job for a period of time, to make sure that we've structured the role the right way and make sure that it's working seamlessly.
That's a great idea.
By no means is this...
Yeah, these are not finished, Joan, and as everybody here knows, we are, we're doing this for the first time, so we hope that you will all let us know when something's not working, and we'll certainly try to improve that. So, I will make that motion to accept the job description for the deputy town manager. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
And as part of the next item, appointing Melissa Appleby as the deputy town manager, we have included an adjusted compensation for her to compensate her for her increased responsibilities and her role, and that increase will be $10,000 as I for current salary. We came to this number not by pulling it out of thin air, but by careful review of similar positions in towns with similar forms of government, and we feel that this is adequate for what we're doing now, and again, we are certainly open to a range, and we have set the, oh, I should have mentioned this in the last one, salary range for the deputy town manager is $95,000 to $130,000, and Melissa would be starting at $106,000. Any questions?
106,900.
106,900, I'm sorry, stand corrected.
Yeah, we spent a fair amount of time with the personnel as well, just, you know, again, staff have done a great job of preparing salary ranges, and it's part of all of our salary review. We do want to make sure that we're paying our town in a fair and comparable amount to other communities, because we are competing for top talent. So, we felt that this was an appropriate number, you know, it's very close to the average. It's often hard to figure out which towns you're averaging yourself against, because you know, is it Greenwich or is it... You know, or Canton or... So, we try to make sure that we're consistent with that, but sometimes we have to look at different towns based on different positions. But again, as Sheri articulated, we're very open to looking at this, and we also left the range open to change, to make sure that we're providing a career and continuity as well, as we mentioned that that was important.
And Melissa has clearly demonstrated her capacity to function in this role, so I would be pleased to offer her this compensation.
Very much so.
Shawn, just picking up on you, I would say, in the documentation, we've identified the six towns that were a competitive comparison. We've identified the low, the high, the midpoint, the average. The average is $107,907, so I think the documentation supports that we evaluated this consistent with how we consistently evaluate positions in the marketplace and occasional benchmark positions.
Sorry. So, I would point out for Cheryl, that if Simsbury wants to be a high-quality town, if we're not gonna do it, thank being the bottom end of the total pool. And they scale, we want good people, we want good work, and we see what good work has brought us, so I absolutely endorse that.
So, I'm gonna make a motion with this one.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The third item is the appointment of Shawn Kimball as the interim town manager. Again, as Chris mentioned before, we knew going into this process that you would probably have an interim period in which we would need to cover the responsibilities of the town manager before our town manager could begin her duties. This was not unexpected, and we are fortunate to have a person with capabilities to step into that role on a temporary basis. The additional compensation for the time period that we will acquire, which will be from December 4, 2017, to January 29, 2018, will be an additional compensation to Shawn Kimball of $2,000 per month. No, I'm sorry.
You took my turn.
I'm sorry about that. I just realized I should have...
Okay, just make a motion for the appointment.
So, yeah, I was gonna jump that out here. I know. Sorry about that, Shawn. Anyway, as with Melissa, Shawn has clearly demonstrated his ability to function in this role, and we are pleased that he is able unwilling to step into it on a temporary basis. So, I make a motion to appoint Shawn Kimball as the interim town manager until January 29, 2018.
Second. Any discussion?
Just a quick comment, that this is absolutely required and a responsible thing to do, because we have to have a town manager at the moment this meeting is over. So, if folks in the public are confused or questioning about that, please come and talk to us, because this is all part of the transition and all that part of the plan. And when we start with new employees, sometimes they can't start the day, you know, the day that the job is created, and this is very common within your role. We have an exit provision in Maria's new contract for notice, so not unexpected and certainly well within the scope of what we've all known about for several years.
Thanks for having that, Shawn. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
So, as Sheri articulated very eloquently, in light of the additional responsibilities and elevation of a role on a temporary basis for Mr. Kimball, it's important that we compensate him in line with those additional responsibilities through preparation of town staff, independent of Mr. Kimball. It was determined that $2,000 per month is an appropriate amount to compensate for the role in addition to his current salary. I believe this will be a stipend versus a change of pay, and that, after review with personnel and with town staff, we felt that that was the most appropriate way to do this. And again, in line with the theme of this evening, it is important to compensate our And again, in line with the theme of this evening, it is important to compensate our workforce appropriately for the roles that we ask them to do, because we certainly do ask them to do a lot. So we...Sherry did say very well, we have full confidence in Sean's ability to lead us during this transition. And again, I think this is...this conversation is in line with his leadership. So I move that we approve a $2,000 per month stipend for Sean Kimball, effective 12/4 to 1/29/18.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
So, next item is the approved severance agreement for the elimination of the Director of Administrative Services position. This is something that was discussed at length. This was not requested by anyone in town staff. This was decided upon at the Personnel Subcommittee level. This is a standard agreement in nearly all walks of employment when you are going to reduce your workforce and go in a different direction. It is important to treat employees fairly while they're in the service of a business or a community, and it's also important to treat them fairly when that service ends. This is, I think, a very appropriate agreement for the town of Simsbury to show that we stand up to our responsibilities as an employer, and that we care about our workforce, and that we want to make sure that we do things the right way. Are we required to do this? No. But there are certain benefits and reasons beyond the required that certainly makes this a prudent thing to do. And for that, I commend my fellow members of the Personnel Subcommittee for agreeing to do this. I know all three of us felt very passionately about this because of our professional experience, that this is very standard. And again, make no mistake, we did eliminate a position. When you eliminate a position, it is very standard to compensate it in order to depart from that position. Again, if folks in the public have questions or concerns or would like to hear more about the theory or the rationale or those discussions, I think any of us are very willing to have those. This is by no means because of Mr. Cook. We are benefited by the fact that he's an outstanding employee and has been an outstanding member of this community, but we would be doing this for anybody that was in that role. It is simply the proper and correct thing to do. We are compensating Mr. Cook for his years of service, which is just shy of seven and a quarter years. So, Tom, we appreciate that. I can't believe that it's only been seven years now. I'm sure for you, it feels like a lot longer. And obviously, there are benefits provisions in this as well, again, which is pretty standard when you're discussing and negotiating a severance agreement, as you'll see in Town Manager contracts or otherwise. So I'm very comfortable with this agreement. And Chris, do we need to outline anything else from this, or is that...
Only if you want to walk through it. We don't need to.
Right. Just a quick walkthrough, there are certain provisions in this from a liability standpoint that are important for the municipality and for Mr. Cook. Obviously, his pension calculation is calculated on his service date through this evening, so folks are wondering how that would work. There is an amount of 14.3 weeks of salary, which holds $35,775, less required any withholdings. That is the compensation portion of this. There are releases that are part of this. And everybody gets to have attorneys look at it. We'll let Sherry do it for us. So with that, I make the motion that we approve the severance agreement as outlined in our package.
Good. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
My understanding is there's no need for supplemental appropriations as of this, because we will true it up as part of our general admin expenses throughout the year end, so we'll revisit that in June alive if we need to. But at this point, there's no supplemental appropriation needed, and the Board of Finance has been made aware of this agreement as well. And the last item is the approved employment agreement for Mr. Cook, his interim Director of Finance and Treasurer. This is important for a number of reasons. One, because this is a transition and continuity is critical. While Mr. Cook is no longer in his Deputy Administrative Services role, his expertise is certainly still needed as we transition, given that we're only able to start for a number of months, and it's important that we retain our knowledge. Two, we can't have the interim Town Manager also be the Treasurer. There needs to be a segregation of duties. Sorry.
Or at least not this one.
And as many of you heard me get my Irish on about internal controls, I am very pleased to see that we're doing this, because once again, this articulates, we know what we're doing, this is part of the process. This is the professional and correct way to do it. We have to have a separation of duties when it comes to the corner office and the finance office, because the finance office and the treasurer are independent of the Town Manager when it comes to signing checks. And that's really critical to make sure that expenses are handled appropriately and that there is a proper separation of duties from a financial standpoint. So with that, I make a motion that we approve the employment agreement for Mr. Cook, his interim Director of Finance and Treasurer.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I can just say one final thing. I would just like to thank, once again, Chris Kelly. Chris, you led us through a number of these items, obviously with the help of Tom and Melissa and the rest of town staff, but really appreciate your organization, your thoughtfulness, and keeping us moving. When we sat down and talked about this a year ago, and you put together your timeline and action plan and spreadsheet, I was a little concerned.
Could go roll their eyes. It was a lot of...
A lot of eye contact.
But Chris meticulously herded the rest of us cats through this process and kept us on point, and I couldn't be more...I knew we were going to get to this point this evening, and I thought it was a really thoughtful and professional way to do it, and I couldn't be more happy with the position we're in, with the fine folks that we have as our town staff and leading this community. So I really appreciate your work on it, Chris.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You know, Eric, if I could, there's two things I'd like to do. You know, in the interest of transparency, I really do want to walk through three exhibits on the final page of the costs associated with these transitions. Again, just to be real clear with people, what they are. The first exhibit is basically taking a look at what do we save from salaries that basically are being eliminated with the movement to the new structure versus what are we paying out new for roles that are emerging in relation to the Town Manager structure and the difference. So under the salary additions in the Town Management structures, $155,000 for the Town Manager, $10,000 of additional compensation annually for the Deputy Town Manager versus the salary for the Assistant Director of Administrative Services. And then we also have the Town Manager annual payment. That's the first one. Yes, I apologize. We will be talking about that, but the anticipated $10,000 Town Manager annual payment, that comes out to a total addition of $175,000. Now, taking a look at what comes offline, the Director of Administrative Services position at approximately $130,000, and the First Select Person position at $65,000, which up to this year was actually $75,000. Those come in at $195,000. So the difference between the two is actually a net savings of $20,000 between the two. The second is really what are the expenses associated with the interim Town Manager structure? So the first is the interim Town Manager payment of $2,000 per month, which is $4,000. The cost of the interim Finance Director/Treasurer pay, which is $16 hours a week times eight weeks times $62.50 per hour is $8,000. If we also add in the cost of covering the insurance during that time period for the interim Finance Director and Treasurer, I estimated that at about $3,400. And again, trying to be as conservative as possible, I actually also put in the Town Manager relocation stipend to $5,000 in here, because technically, that's part of the transition. Those total costs go up to a transition cost of $20,414. So keep in mind, we have a net difference of $20,000 from a salary point of view, which almost covers those interim Town Manager expenses. And then finally, what are the total costs of the severance expenses for the Director of Administrative Services? It's $35,745 of severance, approximately $10,649 for unused vacation, approximately $3,693 for OPEB refund, and approximately $8,537 for COPR coverage. That comes to a total of $58,624. The only expenses that have not been articulated here are any expenses left to making payment to the First Selectman due to accrued benefits that she has received that will be paid out in the future. That gives us the complete costing of both the transition, the interim structure, as well as the severance. And with that said, just a final thing I do want to say, as long as we're all thanking each other, is I do think we have to give a huge thank you to Tom Cook. You know, I mentioned this in the Personnel Subcommittee meeting. If you really look at Tom's hiring, Tom's hiring was in essence an attempt to begin to build a professional structure to the town government. He came in really as a high-level executive management person with incredible background relative to labor relations, contract, human relations, HR, as well as being able to manage people. And Tom, you have more than fulfilled that desire to uplift professionalism of the staff over the seven years that you worked. But what I really would like to, you know, credit for is, you know, when someone's position is eliminated, that is just an incredible impact on people. And I don't think I have an example, and I have been involved in eliminating very many positions, of someone who has been so gracious in that experience and someone who just committed himself to doing what is best on behalf of the town. And Tom had an absolute passion to, in a non-self-centered way and in a very well-centered way, to be an important leader in this transition to the Town Manager form of government. And so I just want to recognize that, Tom, and say thank you very much. Your attitude through this was just an immense help to the success of this effort, so thank you very much.
Thank you so very much.
And that's it, Eric. Don, I appreciate the benchmarking and the data-driven approach and the transparency there going through those numbers. And yeah, as Sean said, if any members of the public have any questions regarding the rationale, do please reach out, because we want to be transparent. So next item is F, which is setting a stipend for the First Selectman. Now, Chris, handle that one, and I'll keep myself.
Okay. So as Eric departs, the history on this is that the Charter Revision Commission recommended... We've used a lot of different words, but in essence, what they recommended was an annual payment to the First Selectman to really offset expenses that they may incur as part of that role. They weren't looking at it as inducement to do the position, they weren't looking at it as compensation for the position, but what they wanted to take off the table, that there would be expenses associated with the role and feeling that those should be reimbursed. The charter stipulates that it's really this board that determines what that is. They did have some rough guidelines, a couple of different formulas that could be used. We did feel, as part of our due diligence as a board, that we wanted to at least have a recommendation. And when we discussed it, we settled last year, we kind of coalesced around the idea of $10,000 annual stipend. That was a bit less than some of the formulas that were in the Charter Revision, but when you looked at where those formulas all netted out, they all seemed to be, to us, much higher than what the expenses of the position would be. So the history on this is that's what we informally coalesced around. So with that, I would look for a motion. Let's have a motion on that first and then have a conversation.
Good motion.
Okay. Our conversation?
I think it's reasonable. I think it's consistent with what we have talked about in the past from the Charter Revision coming forward. It is...my supporting of that is not driven by individual here, it's really about the position, and I think we should be consistent in what we've talked about, and I think it's reasonable.
Okay, thank you.
I think my only question would be how we are going to manage the logistics of that, if it is actually for expenses, is it going to be...because this is not...doesn't have anything to do with personnel, it's not an employee, it doesn't have benefits attached, there's nothing else attached to it. Because we had discussed if the expenses were greater than that, that you would have an opportunity to ask for additional reimbursement if there were actual expenses. So are we going to have expenses presented and then reimbursed, or are we going to have a set payment at a particular time, or...
So my understanding of the $10,000 is basically a set payment that we will...we'd have to determine how it is periodically paid out. You bring up a good point, which is we had discussed of if this individual had expenses beyond $10,000, they still would be subject to be able to submit those. So what that is going to trigger is some mechanism to keep track for that individual, keep track of expenses.
I think technically that is actually covered for any selectman. We can ask for actual expenses to be reimbursed pending approval by this board, so we could just leave it at that. I just wanted to raise it as a potential issue for when we do. And I didn't know if that had any ramifications either for the person receiving the stipend from a tax basis or whether it's actual expenses or...
Well, if you do a stipend, I'm pretty sure that's a 1099 situation for an employee. And one potential way, we have not had a discussion at the staff level in terms of what the best way we can use our pay this out. I think that they have...my assumption of it, that it would be pro-rated and it would be paid out in some reasonable timeframe. To your point, it might be advantageous to ask the First Selectman to submit, as time goes by, whatever expenses he incurs, so that you all have a sense for whether or not... My earth thanks, whether or not the stipend is on the right track, that would also allow you, if in fact expenses went over the proposed $10,000 annual, to make an adjustment.
I just think for benchmarking purposes, since this is the first time we're doing this, if it's not too onerous on the First Selectman to actually submit those expenses so that we...so we know for the budget for next year, whether we're...you know, we have to have some language that we're working with. And right now, we're doing what we think is reasonable based on what we've seen, but I don't want to shortchange anybody, and I don't want, you know...
The first time you're doing this.
Yeah.
I would make the suggestion that I would agree, I believe it's going to be a 1099 situation. I think the neatest and cleanest way to do it would be for the First Selectman to give a periodic invoice, monthly or something, whatever's agreed on, to the town, and it becomes a matter of fact. And if there were...I'd be hesitant to put every expense in there, but the words that come to mind are exceptional expenses, and that's not right. But much like we just said with the previous A through I, we're going to revisit this, and it should be part of the budget, but the more data we can have to document, I think it would be to the top of it and then transparent, and that's what we're all after.
I should know this, but do we have an expense policy?
We have.
I think that actually is in the Charter that the Selectman can...
Yeah, but what's an expense? I don't think it is...there's not a statement of it somewhere. We know, for example, that mileage is reimbursed, and we know that certain professional development is reimbursed, things like that, but we don't, I think, have anything that limits it or that tries to put a box around it.
We should probably look into that, because if we're going to ask somebody to track expenses and submit to us, we should probably be articulating what those are. You know, is it time away from work, is it not? Is it just travel? Is it the cost of cutting the ribbon? Is it actually buying the ribbon? Is it the scissors, too?
And as you know, in our world, it's basically everything except compensation. Sorry if you're, you know, if you're...right. So if you're traveling, then it's going to be things like mileage and parking.
Because as I envision, this mileage and attendance of events, I'd be hard-pressed to go over $10,000 if you think about it. It would be this. But I also don't want to sit here and quibble about whether it's 12 miles to Hartford or 13 miles to Hartford either. It would probably be better to leave the stipend as is and then work to have an expense policy and make the First Selectperson and kind of staff subject to the expense policy. And maybe, you know, because I think it would probably be fair to do that. And maybe, you know, because I think it would probably be fair to do the same for everybody. Not that we have any concern with how expensive are, but I think it's important to clearly lay out, when you go to a conference, yeah, you can have lunch, and yes, your mileage is reimbursed, that's, that's an appropriate usage of expenses, but no, we're not going to pay you because you took a day off from work. At least, I mean, that's just my opinion, but, you know, I think that's something that we should probably discuss from a policy standpoint. So, long-winded way of saying I have no issue with the $10,000.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing with the dollars. I'm just discussing the logistics.
No, you, you were spurring a lot of thoughts on my end, and I think that was a good point to raise. So, I think we can move forward with the type of risk.
Right, right, and, and, you know, here, just capturing what you're proposing, Sean, is there's a best practice to track what the expenses of the first select person might be, and we'll do that, you know, separately under taking a look at the expense reimbursement policy, so. Any other further discussion?
So, do you want, do you have a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion. We have a motion, and a second, actually. So, all who approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any guests? Nate? So, carries. Thank you.
Eric, any further?
Temperature in the hall is about 15 degrees cooler than it is.
So, item G is the reappointment of Town Council, Labor Employment Council, Retirement Plan Council. So, the history here is that through the RFP process, the town has established relationships with three separate entities for legal service, including Updike Kelly and Spelce Town Council, Mertha Colina Labor Employment Council, and Wigan and Dana Retirement Council. And the recommendation before us is to reappoint these firms for the next two years to maintain continuity during the transition period, and with the condition of the town measures to conduct an RFP for these services after June 30th of 2018, which is about six months away. Tom, is there anything else that you would add?
I think the, the goal here is to balance the interest and continuity with the town manager's ability to, to recommend and move forward with an RFP for different services. Maria may come to the town with relationships that work well, and not that we wouldn't, of course, do an RFP process for something like that, but it just, it makes sense to put, and we're frankly happy with the firms we have, they've done very well, but particularly in light of the, of the budget challenges I'm sure that we'd be facing with the state doing what it does, it might not be a bad thing to conduct an RFP. So, I just wanted to make sure that Maria had that opportunity after, after some time. In the meantime, that, that gives her an opportunity to, to work with them, to capture whatever history she needs. That's it, Eric.
Any questions or further discussion on this one?
Just a point, we did this, we did an RFP, what, three and a half years ago?
Yeah, I think, it's, it's something like that.
So, and at the time, Craig, I'm wrong, but Updike Kelly and Spelce were significantly more affordable from a cost standpoint than other firms.
That was our experience with the respondents, yes.
I was, I, again, I think, you know, we have gotten good, good service there, and I think Mike Harrington in particular has been a world of help as we've navigated some challenging labor agreements over the last few years. I, I certainly would support this, I think it makes sense, but again, wanting to respect and maintain flexibility for Maria once she has an opportunity to get in and see what works and what does not work. Yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay. So, is there a motion to reappoint Updike Kelly and Spelce, Mertha Colina, and Wigan and Dana for a two-year term with the proviso that the town measures to conduct an RFP for these services after June 30th of 2018?
Aye.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on now to appointments and resignations. So, there are about a dozen boards and commissions that have been created by the Board of Selectmen that will go away if we don't continue them, but additional time is needed to determine appointments and reappointments to those boards if necessary. So, is there a motion to continue the current appointments to temporary committees until the January 22nd, 2018 meeting, and appoint members to boards and commissions established by Chapter 6 of the Charter at the January 22nd Board of Selectmen meeting?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And lastly is I am to amend the November 27th, 2017 Board of Selectmen motion regarding the appointment of Lori Coppinger. So, at that time, she was appointed to Culture, Parks and Rec. Submission had the wrong end date, it said 2022, it should have said 2018, which is literally like, you know, three or four weeks from now. So, on this one, is there a motion to amend the November 27th, 2017 appointment of Lori Coppinger to reflect that the term ends January 1 of 2018?
Aye.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. So, I think last but not least, is there a motion to...
Aye.
Hey, you all in favor?
Aye.
And the motion.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.